Good afternoon, my name is Matt Syke. I'll be kind of the panel moderator for this session that's called "Designing for Modularity." And I've got some great guests up here, but before I introduce them, I want to kind of set the stage for just kind of framing the discussion relative to this topic. And so, got just a couple of thoughts here. This is kind of my thesis, you could say, for this panel is that designing for modularity is a common practice. In fact, you might discover during this panel that I kind of twisted some arms for some folks on the panel today to be up here to talk about designing for modularity and how they actually do this as a common practice. It's also, this is kind of the second thesis for this would just simply be that as we see this kind of increase in complex systems, that the need for designing for modularity in fact actually increases as well. And so, we all know that our weapon systems that we're building today, whether they're commercial or, you know, I guess, you know, just commercial products or military products, they're getting more and more complex and that modularity actually becomes a very important part of that. So what we have up here today with us is we have some folks from Archer, Airbus, Bell, and GE. And so, to kind of frame the rest of this discussion, I've got just a few bullet points to kind of talk about. This is how I'd like you to think about this problem set, MOSA and modularity in particular, as you're hearing each of these briefs. And so, first is just understanding the genesis of MOSA. I've been talking about MOSA and on panels for the past like six or seven years now, and I really want people to understand that MOSA is not new whatsoever. It's like, MOSA has been out there forever, we just haven't called it MOSA. And I think you'll see that as some of the folks today brief, they're like, wait, same, that's a, yeah, that's a new system, but similar versions of that have like been out there for a long time. And so, we've been applying these MOSA sorts of principles for a long time, we just didn't necessarily call it MOSA. In fact, a lot of times, we just called it, hey, that's good systems engineering, right? Systems engineering with a business mindset is how I would probably think about it. But we've certainly seen like this resurgence of MOSA over the past like maybe five to 10 years at the most, and really, like that was really driven by a desire for acquisition change. In fact, almost any panel discussion you have with military members from acquisition offices, or anybody from the DoD in general, there's clearly a demand for change in how we acquire systems, although it's driven by simply need for speed, right? I don't think you could go to any conference this year and listen to any military member talk about whatever their topic is without talking about the need for speed and to go quicker relative to acquisitions. And so, MOSA, I believe, is one of the things being used to help us go faster ultimately. Now, will it go faster right off the bat? Not necessarily, but will it go faster long term? I believe it will. And then that kind of led into Congress getting involved and saying, hey, we think there's something here relative to MOSA, so we're going to start pushing out a lot of Title X law to say what we expect to see. And so, you saw three different updates for the law and Title X, US Code Title X come out between 2019 and 2021, that all had like a little bit of information, then had more information, then had a lot of information relative to expectations for MOSA, relative to DoD acquisition efforts. And so, that's kind of the genesis for MOSA for the past several years, not new, been around for a while, it's in Title X very, very robustly. And so, next, I want to just like kind of, again, this is about framing our discussion we're going to have, is when we say MOSA, I really want people to just think big picture strategy. MOSA is an approach, it's a strategy, it's a business and technical strategy, right? And so, I want us to think about, well, what drives the need for a strategy? And think about that in a more generic term, not necessarily relative, I mean, yes, you can think about for military systems, but just in general, when do I need a strategy? Well, I need a strategy whenever I have a challenge, or an obstacle, or I want to achieve something that I haven't been achieving. And so, you can think about that as like, hey, I'm walking down the road and there's a big obstacle in front of me. Well, what are you going to do? Well, you develop a strategy, you say, am I going to jump over it? Am I going to climb over it? Am I going to walk around it? You want to pick an approach to deal with that thing that's in front of you. And so, think about strategy in that same sense, apply that to an acquisition system. Challenges, desires to position differently relative to a product. Next is that there is no singular MOSA. Like, I don't know how many, I've literally have probably have done, I don't know, 15 panels in the past two years on MOSA. I want people to say, there is no singular MOSA. There's not one MOSA to rule them all, there, hopefully, there will never be a singular MOSA standard, or hopefully, there will be, you know, each program, each office, each enterprise needs to define their business and technical strategy for whatever their obstacles or objectives are. And so, no singular MOSA. And then, next one is, I really want to spend just a few moments talking about modularity and openness decisions. Because I think a lot of times, we use different terminology for what modularity and openness really means. But the top level, I really want to drive home the point that to do MOSA, you're going to have to make modularity decisions, you're going to have to make openness decisions, and that those are largely going to be driven by who owns the desires or objectives that you're trying to achieve. So if I already go to like each company and say, what are your modular and openness decisions? Well, Carl would probably tell me, well, it depends on what program you're talking about, or depending on who the customer is for that sort of thing, as far as what the objectives are and what the desires are, that then drive a set of decisions that have to be made. But to help us understand these two topics a little bit better, I want to kind of give you Matt's definition of modularity and openness, or things that we ought to think about relative to modularity. And you won't find this like in a textbook anywhere, it's my own made up definitions, but from a modularity perspective, I just want people to think about whatever system that I'm building, or whatever system that I'm thinking about, or a set of components, can I simply say, hey, this is something that I'm going to build or make myself, and it's somehow separated from other stuff, or I might want to have somebody else build this? All you're doing is you're starting to draw a boundary around something that's important to you. If you can draw a boundary around it, or define it fairly well, it's likely going to be a module. And so, like, when I used to work inside of P O Aviation, I would literally go tell programs, hey, can you define your top 20 modules? Things that you care about on your platform? If you can do that, it would tremendously help industry understand what's important to you, it would also feed the industrial base. So just high level modules, don't make them too difficult. If you can draw a boundary around it, if you can procure it, it's likely a module. The next area is openness, and I think this probably causes the most amount of misunderstanding across the industrial base, across the government, holistically, because people, I get two extremes is what I hear relative to openness. I hear it's only standards, if you have standards there, thou shalt, you are open now. And then, the other one I get is, if I have general purpose or unlimited rights, then I thereby am open. And I don't believe that either of those are true. So, when I say openness being defined, I generally try to get people to have a conversation about these three areas I have on the screen. One is, what are the standards and specs that you expect to be applied to each of those modules that you defined earlier? If you can tell me what those standards and specs are, then that is now something that I can better understand the interfaces, I can understand how it's being built in a consistent manner. The second area is technical data package. And so, to describe this one, I'd like to kind of introduce the idea of black box, gray box, white box. Openness is really about transparency. What level of transparency do you desire on a platform or on a product? Are you okay with a black box? That's like a level of transparency, almost like there's a level of openness that you have. Some cases, that's perfectly fine, and we ought to be okay with that. Other cases, I might want to say, I need to see the guts, I need to see everything on the inside of it, so I have to get to a lower level of detail. Well, that, all of those things impact what technical data package that you need as a customer, as a procure of that system. And so, what your technical data package is, and how much you're going to ask for, really matters. And then, the third category is data rights. So depending on what I want to do with each of those modules, and how much transparency I need into that module, I need to know, do I have the rights to do anything with it, right? So, it may be great to have all the, like if I said, hey, Mike, give me all the TDP for absolutely everything that has to do with your engines. Mike says, yeah, sure, I'll show it to you. But if I can't do anything with it, like share it with anybody else that I might have interest in using it, or be able to use it to actually develop my own repair procedures, then I don't have the data rights I need to create the transparency I need to achieve the objectives I'm really after. So when I think about modularity, I think about openness, modularity and openness decisions that are being made. If I can kind of caveat them in that way, it really helps us understand the MOSA that we're after. And so, here's the for the crowd. And I guarantee you, almost every one of you are going to have this thought in your head at some point during this briefing, is that when somebody's briefing, you're going to think, man, that does not sound like MOSA to me. And I would just challenge you to come back to this point, and at that top level, think about, well, are the modularity openness decisions that they're describing, who are they being driven by? Are they being driven by the customer? Are they being driven by an internal company desire, the objective that they're trying to achieve? And say, well, it probably is MOSA, it just may not be the MOSA you think you want, right? And so, but you're also not the one driving their objectives for their company, right? So just consider that point as we're going through some of this today. And then, the last one for me is that I do think we need to get out of the, I guess we've kind of been stuck for several years, that MOSA has only been applied mostly to like software and avionics and mission systems, it applies to so much more on these systems that we build within the DoD and even in the commercial sector. And so, yes, it absolutely applies to avionics, yes, it absolutely applies to mission systems and software, but it can be applied to so much more. And I think you're going to see some of those examples as we have the briefers here brief today. So with that, I want, basically, I would go to each person and have them give a good seven minute kind of pitch from their company relative to their perspective of designing for MOSA, and then we'll come back for some questions, and then I'll open up to the audience for any questions or comments that you have. And so, first up today, if we want to go and get the next set of charts up, we're going to start with Airbus, and today, we got Carl up here with us, and he's the Director of Business and Strategy for the Military Line of Business for Airbus U.S. Prior to working for industry, Carl served as a Marine Corps Aviator flying CH-46s and MV-22s. Now, I thought this next part was pretty interesting by him, I did not know, is that post his Marine Corps time, he flew EC-120 helicopters for the Baltimore City Police, and then joined Bell Textron, where he worked on the V-22 program, did some FMS stuff, and advanced programs before beginning his position here at Airbus. So, Carl, over to you.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate the setup, because, you know, this is more than about, you know, the avionics and software piece of it, especially from our seat at Airbus. And it's, you know, we talk about MOSA as a strategy, MOSA as a business case, and I think that's really a change in mindset that needs to occur, because in a lot of ways, we've been practicing MOSA somewhat by accident in a lot of ways all along. It's the strategy and the business case that over the last several years, we've really worked on implementing it, and especially our DoD business. And as a, you know, the U.S.-facing arm of an international company, the introduction to MOSA can be kind of violent and surprising when the first time trying to introduce it across the organization. They think, well, what's the standard? What's the spec? We'll put some MOSA on it, and we'll be good to go. And they think of it as something you add on to the process, we're going to sprinkle this on, and you see, you know, a wide lineup of helicopters, 15,000 of them, over 3,000 customers, and I think the customers piece, we'll circle back to that in a second, because I think that's extremely relevant, you know, 50% of global civil and parapublic. So a huge wide customer base, and support that, a huge manufacturing, design, and sustainment base, that's not just in the places you think of it, but it's literally around the world, you know, five of the seven continents, you're going to find, you know, Airbus manufacturing, and that's, and customers, actually, for all seven continents, but building stuff almost every one of them. And maintaining that infrastructure and the commonality just to implement this across that, that sort of wide spectrum is challenging. And so, you have to sort of think, some of this, we sort of fell into as a legacy of previous designs, and the evolution of those designs has led itself to a need to do some modularity, but also, how do we make that deliberate strategy so that going forward, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, that we can leverage our existing certifications while still continuing to avoid obsolescence and continue to expand capabilities for these aircraft? You know, so at, a lot of times, we, you know, again, going to the what's MOSA, we think it has to go down to the individual, you know, part number level, and that may be, maybe the case in some point, maybe a spec level. At the others point, it may also just be a methodology that you're going to use common throughout your entire product line. You'll see sort of, as we go through this, a little bit more of a legacy behind that. Obviously, avionics, a huge change in recent years, I'm not going to dwell entirely on that, but we've tried to implement that progressively along our avionics and for military products under the mission systems. If you go to the next slide. And this is where I sort of rubber meets the road, is that history of the company, very complex, you know, MBB became DASSA, joined Aerospaceal, French company, became Eurocopter, which is part of EADS, and we rebranded to Airbus Helicopters, which has multiple subsidiaries thereof. And you see divergences in design that are based in that historical legacy of those aircraft. So then, how do we, you know, take advantage of these existing infrastructures? You know, the most famous one, and, you know, in the helicopter pilot world is, you know, French helicopters rotate the, you know, quote, wrong way. Americans do it the other way, but also, what I didn't realize until I actually got to the company is that German helicopters also go the counterclockwise way. So that a split, where you talk about the organizational history, actually ended up diverging those lineages very dramatically, and as the company has gone on, now we have a unified engineering team. Again, something I didn't learn before I came to company, you go to the Airbus headquarters, the official language is English, right? It's not French, it's not German, everyone needs to be on the same page. I wouldn't say using English as a MOSA criteria, but it lends itself to a culture of intending to get these things back together. And some things, you do have to accept a certain amount of divergence in order to continue to leverage your legacy products. You know, as many, you know, large customers ask, can you put a reversing gear somewhere in that drive train to spin it the right way? It's like, that's a lot harder than it sounds. So, as knock-on effects throughout, you have to literally change everything throughout the supply chain, the whole infrastructure. So again, it's not something we can work out of the system at this point, but then how, what systems can we actually integrate throughout these? If you go to the next slide, real quick. So, as an example, AS350, that's squirrel in French, the original parent of the A-Star family, now the H-125. So it became a baseline for an entire group of helicopters, now known as the H-125, but also substantial commonality with the 130, and before that, the 120, and probably more to the, you know, that's the French lineage. But again, you see common drivetrain, air structures, and technological certifications that are common throughout that line of aircraft. Similarly, on the German end of the family tree, the BK-117, on through the 145, Lakota. Again, the commonalities between those are there, from an air structures point of view. But as we go on through the additional mission systems, you'll see commonalities as we start to militarize those aircraft, for example, a common mission systems framework is laid on top of these very different airframes, trying to bring these things so that the sustainment of those mission systems, avionics, achieves a greater commonality as we iterate over time. And the best example I can give quickly is, next slide, please, is the 145 family. So starting way back with everyone's favorite aircraft, the Red Bull, the BO-105, then diverging into the 117, and sort of following on that top line, you'll see where technologies are added and back in to achieve higher degrees of commonality, not necessarily to the part number level, but using expertise gained in one program to further the other one and increase its modularity over time. And notice that, because Airbus has primarily a civil aircraft company, achieving this has been very beneficial, and we only have a few purpose-built military products, but by this iterative capability, this iterative practice, using some degree of technological modularity, I'm able to missionize the 145 into several different military variants, and most likely into an unmanned variant working on for the Marine Corps. And you'll see the technology being incorporated, the Fenestrone tail going into the Lakota, and then, you know, finding some difficulties with that, changing the rotor head to accommodate some interaction between those two. And again, you'll see Fenestrons across a great number of Airbus products, similar rotor head design, again, not to the part number level, but the engineering practices, supply chains, things like that, allow itself to high degree of commonality, service sustainment, and to a large part, the maintenance and pilot training commonalities that you achieve by doing that. And lastly, you know, it ties into that avionics piece, and I think the customer, you know, again, going to Matt's point about what frames the desire for MOSA, who's actually defining the playing field? The avionics, you know, we think of it from a interface, you know, a integration versus federation, what standards are doing, but a lot of this comes down to making the customer happy, especially a customer that may switch between different helicopters, that may have different suppliers they have to interact with, that may have to source these from different places, as we do as well. Maintaining a higher degree of interoperability and a greater degree of standardization as these systems are rolled out is extremely important. So whether you define it from the supply chain standard, supply chain standpoint, the manufacturing standpoint out, or the customer standpoint going the other way, increasing this commonality over time reduces friction for both ends, both on the production side as well as the customer.
All right, thanks, Carl. All right, next up, we have from Archer Aviation, we have Joe Pantalone, who's the Head of Defense and Advanced Programs for Archer Aviation. Prior to this, Joe was the Director of Special Programs and Operations Analysis at Sikorsky Aircraft, Lockheed Martin Company, as well as a Lockheed Senior Technical Fellow. Joe has a steeped background in dynamic systems, propulsion, survivability, mission systems design, fabrication, testing, fielding, and I know that to be true, because as I was walking around this event with Joe, everybody's like, hey, Joe, hey, Joe, everybody knows Joe, right? So, Joe, over to you.
Thanks, Matt. So, you know, it's going to be, so fairly new at Archer, right? And I'm not going to have those charts that show five or six planes, right? Go to the first chart, Matt, for a sec. We got one, right? But, yeah, right. But, you know, fairly new company, right? And we, we're standing up Archer Defense, as maybe you guys have seen in some of the press, but, but, you know, as Matt said, and during his, during his talk, right, when he first called me up, I go, dude, I'm not your guy, right? And I can't even spell MOSA, right? And, you know, all the time at Sikorsky, and big focus on MOSA for FAR and FLARA, right? And every time those conversations came up, or those sections of the briefs, I found something else to do, right? But, but, almost because what you said, Matt, right, it was focused on avionics, mission systems, and software, right? And that, you know, that really wasn't, you know, where I had enough energy to spend, but, you know, after you and I were chatting, and after I learned a lot from you, you were absolutely right. It's, if you put, you know, a package around it, it's, 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 could be a MOSA, and think about things differently, and how you want to modularize and make, make things significantly more, you know, faster, cheaper, better, stronger, lighter, and all that good stuff. So, you know, he talked me into it, and it kind of made sense, and I'm, you know, starting to march down that journey. So, I'm going to seem pretty ignorant, and so, please forgive me, but I'll do, I'll do my best, but I am on the journey, and hopefully, you all can help me as well. So, all right, next slide. So, you know, I could be a lot more tactical, I think, with, with what, you know, what we're doing at Archer. So, you know, our, we're on a path for FAA CERT of midnight. It's a, it's a derivative, and I'm using that term very loosely, from mid-zero, that's been flying for the last year, that we learned a lot, and we're getting ready to fly the FAA CERT plane. But, but, so, from, for, you know, an architecture that has redundant, you know, multiple props, right? We're talking 12 props, right? So they're, right away, there's almost modularity just built into the, just the overall architecture. But, but, you know, what does it drive for us? And as, if we want to put more modularity in, how does it trade all the various attributes, like performance, safety, certification, and the business side? There's one thing I learned over the years at, you know, in my career, is especially when, when you're responsible for a P and L, and you're asking for money, and you're meeting with a CFO, and he says, okay, Joe, when am I getting my return on investment? When am I getting my return on sales? How come you're only giving me 5% fee? And how come you're not giving me 15% fee? And, well, okay, Mark, well, it's because this is already T and E, and this is the most you're going to give me, but don't worry, when we get to the proc money, I'll get you 15, I'll get you, I promise, you promise? Yeah, I promise, right? So, he looks at me and goes, hey, Joe, everybody's a CFO. So, you know, so the business side of things is crazy important, especially when you're in a startup like Archer, who is pre-revenue, and you got to perform, otherwise, you know, you can, you can calculate when the runway ends, right? So, we're very, we're very motivated. But on the performance side, you know, weight is critical on these type of planes. And, you know, at Sikorsky, our mass properties guys, you know, the units we had was pounds, Archer, it's ounces, right? I mean, we, you know, we'll sell our mother for five pounds on this plane. So, and the same thing with propulsion efficiency, especially when you're, especially when you're all electric, you know, you're, the planes are slated, are slated for a very specific mission, and they do very well at, you know, downtown Manhattan to JFK. When you wanted to be on the DoD side, or the non-commercial side, is what I'd like to say, right? If you look at the studies that ran, and NAFORs come out, that's not very military, military relevant, so we're hopping into hybrid. But weight is still key, energy, power and energy density is crazy important. And if you can somehow modularize that and take advantage of that, that's the stuff we need to look at. Same thing with our propellers, I mean, we've got 12 props, and I don't have as many as five propellers, you start doing that count, right? There's a lot of modularity right there. Plus, technology in that area, in that area of propulsion has always, has always grown, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but, you know, how do you insert, if a better prop becomes available, that's, you know, got a better figure, better L over D, you want to get that on, on the plane. So, how can you prepare the plane to be able to do stuff like that? And then, actuation's another big thing, too, for, on the performance side. Things are always tilting and moving, right? So, how are you, how are you taking advantage of being able to trade all the different actuators out and have them be very similar, or limit the number of designs to as small as possible? Safety is critical, right? The plane is built for redundancy, so that's important. The flight control computers and various computers on the plane, as technology matures for that, you heard during the utility office brief, they were like, what do you, what do you mean, your brick is eight megabytes, right? So, you know, if you can get the computers to be better, faster, you know, you want to, you want to take advantage, especially as you start incorporating various autonomy technologies, or crew workload reduction technologies, right? So that usually means more, more computing. So, and then, you also heard, that's the security side, too, you know, making sure that, that from a cyber security thing, that the plane is safe. Certification's a big thing, we're going down that, that path right now. How could we, how could we design for separable modules and stuff like that, and isolate different changes to individual modules that allow for multiple module CERT, and to be separable and not affect other systems? And then, like I said, on the business side of things, can we be modular for dollars per cost mile? I told you about the ROI and ROS, that's a big thing with our CFO, right? Okay, Joe, you're going after this, some of these projects on your side of the business, if I give you X amount of money, when am I getting it back, right? How could, how do we reduce maintenance costs, operating costs? And then, and, and the purchase price of the plane, right? That's all critical. Next slide. Some of the systems, you know, some of the top modular system decisions, batteries are critical, too, right? The technology battery is changing very, very rapidly, whether you need higher power density or higher energy density, faster discharge. As that matures, can we just swap those out and now go from, increase our range by 2X and maybe add another 100 pounds of payload? So, you know, being able to do that with a simple swap in, swap out, as you see with the electric car business. Same thing with generators. I mentioned blades before, and actuation technologies, comm systems, software, and the various nav systems, too. How could we modular in that way? And the various flight control computers, as an LRU to swap in, swap out. Next. To give you a good example, the plane has, like I said, 12 propellers, six tilt and six are fixed, that we call lifters. Between those two, there are 95% of the same parts, the only thing that changes is the housing and the output shaft. So, a really good example where we're trying to, you know, leverage production commonality, get the cost down, and really take advantage of that. And then, finally, yeah, so, I bought in, right? Modular for performance, redundancy, maintainability, and again, I'll keep hammering that finance side of things. But allows for integration of new technologies and capabilities, so that, you know, you don't become obsolete, you know, by the time you feel, right? That's, that's, that's death.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Joe. Great pictures, too. I just, I can't keep from looking at how good like aircraft looks. Good-looking aircraft. So next up, we got Lee Anderson from Bell. He is the Director of Advanced Programs for both military and commercial applications. To what he described, I thought this was really interesting, to radically redefine vertical lift. lift. That's a pretty good objective. Previously, he served as the PM for the Bell 360 Inc. One FAR program. He also spent time on the aircraft survivability and special access programs. Prior to Bell, Lee spent 26 years in the US Air Force as a Special Operations Aviator and Commander. Over to you, Lee.
Thanks, slides. I wanted to bring kind of a little bit more of an academic theoretical discussion to modularity, so I don't have any airplane pictures, but I'll tell airplane stories. And, you know, Matt mentioned it earlier, modularity is a whole lot more than just the digital aspect of it, and I was gonna walk through a little bit of that, and maybe challenge the crowd a little bit with some questions back at you. Next slide, please. So, starting out with digital systems, right? We all like to talk about the aircraft digital backbone. You know, if you look at a modern aircraft, there's miles of wire and wire bundles, right, as big as your arm, running all over the aircraft, and nobody wants to know how much they actually weigh, how hard it is to route them, and how difficult it is to maintain them. So, how do we take weight and mass, or weight and mass, how do we take weight and space out of that system? How do we make it more efficient, which then allows us to make it more redundant, right? If I've, you know, if you look at DARPA and the original ARPANET, what was its goal? It was to create a very resilient data network across the US in case we were attacked. How do I take a packet of information from New York to Los Angeles and give it 500 different ways to get there? And, you know, and that was really the birth of the modern internet. In some ways, you know, as we talk about the digital backbone, that's a similar goal. How do we make, when there's a piece of information at one end of the aircraft that needs to get somewhere else, and give it multiple ways to get there, and the most efficient way possible? And doing so requires high bandwidth, you know, skinny connections, you know, as we talk about fiber, we talk about high-capacity Ethernet. But, really, it comes down to, it's the central nervous system of the aircraft. So, to take advantage of that central nervous system, if you're into MOSA geekery, you'll hear about data models and data modeling and reference architectures, isolators, guards, air vehicle versus mission system. You know, we love to argue about a radio, whether it's an air vehicle component or a mission system component. And invariably, your aircraft will always have components and systems left over from the pre-digital age, right? New systems, it's easier to be born digital, but if you've got a, you know, an inertial reference unit, or a radio, or a sensor, that has a 1553, or a serial, or an AERIC 429 interface, how are you going to, A, plug into it, and then B, turn it into a format in a data-centric universe, where you can get that on the digital backbone, and then everybody else can see that information? And when we talk about that, the data-centric, or the data abstraction, if I have a FLIR ball, and I have FLIR ball X and FLIR ball Y, and I take, and the aircraft really doesn't care what FLIR ball is on the aircraft, it only cares what the information provided by that FLIR ball is, and that's the data model. And so that everybody who knows, I'm looking for FLIR information, knows to pull that out. So if I replace the ball with X with Y, and it's putting the same information on the bus, because it has been abstracted to a data model, then again, the airplane doesn't care, and that creates a layer of modularity. One of the other things, and you see this in legacy aircraft, and hopefully we get better at it moving forward, is every function on the aircraft was its own box. You know, we use the term line-replaceable unit, or LRU, right? Every thing was a box this big, or some of them were this big. And if you have an airplane that's got a lot of functions, you may have 20, or 30, or 40 of these boxes, and each of those boxes have a mounting tray, and each of them has a big cannon plug, and a power distribution unit, and cooling airflow, and all the things. And so, my first assignment in the Air Force, I flew the N Model Huey, the Bell 212. We had very little, very few systems on it. Few years after that, I got to see the Marine Corps Yankee Huey. It looked a lot like the N Model, but inside, when you look around, you see there's about 20 boxes stacked all over the walls everywhere, because the Marine Corps brought a lot more capability to the aircraft. But at the time, bringing capability required adding all of those boxes. So how do we get away with, or from that? Think in terms of the cloud, and it's not like being in the cloud, but think in terms of ubiquitous server farm and core processing. Now, each one of my functions is merely an executable running on a mission computer, rather than a specific processor for each one of the functions. And that's AERIC 653 in terms of creating containers to execute within, virtual machines, you know, in some ways, as well as how do I get that in front of the air crew or other people with an AERIC 661 video display stack? If you look at glass cockpits from the last few decades, and you want to bring a new thing to that glass cockpit, invariably, you run into the challenge of, well, how do I get it out on a display, right? The displays are all closed, they're all locked, they're all being used. If I want to bring new information, now I've got a Velcro, a new display somewhere else in the cockpit. And pretty soon, you've got 10 different things, you know, strapped all over the aircraft, and nobody wants that. So how do we create that ubiquitous processing, and the ability to make use of that processing and interface with the humans onboard? In addition to that, you know, and you'll notice there on the left side, these are all things that are core for autonomy, but how all your intelligent systems talk to the aircraft, right, requires some stability, and how you interface with the flight control system. And talking to the flight control system is very important, that you tell it no lies, because you don't want it to do bad things to you, as well as vehicle management system. And when I say vehicle management system, I mean gear up and down, generator off and on, hydraulic pump off and on, right? How do you control those different systems on the aircraft for normal and emergency operations? In the automotive industry, and Rivian especially, I think's been really successful in terms of creating the software-defined vehicle. In essence, nobody cares about any of the processors or chips, as long as you can buy the chips, but really, it's that software that defines the functionality of the vehicle. And I think you're seeing the same thing starting to happen with the flying computers of today. You know, I used to joke that the V22 was a flying computer, and it was, but it really was a flying computers. And now, as you look at our next generation of aircraft, how do we take that from a federated or integrated federation of flying computers and individual processors, and turn that into a coherent, minimal, but yet powerful, digital system? Next slide, please. So, you know, early on, when I was introduced to FEL from the Bell side, and interfacing with Huntsville in the program, you know, I heard the term, you know, digital backbone's not just data, it's data, it's physical, right, structure, it's power and cooling, right? If you don't have all those things, you don't have the capability to bring new toys to the aircraft. So, just for a minute, as we talk about designing for modularity, how are, what are you doing as a designer to create those interfaces to hang new toys on the airplane? In the fixed-wing fighter world, you know, we've been doing it since World War II in terms of hardpoints out on the wings. Those hardpoint standards are very consistent, right? 14-inch lugs, right? 1781 interfaces, you know, how do I talk to the bombs? How do I drop the bombs? And whenever somebody comes up with a new bomb, they just make sure that it fits on the same hardpoint. Similarly, with vertical lift aircraft, and you can see up on the slide, there's lots of different ways that we interface physically with the aircraft. We may have an attack aircraft with hardpoints on the outside. Internally, we almost always have tie-down rings if there's a cabin or cargo area. We often have stanchion points, right, hard cleats, you know, in different places on the aircraft, if we're doing fast-for-propel. One of the most useful things that we had on the V22 was a pair of seat tracks down both sides of the aircraft, and we figured out that you can hang all kinds of things on the seat tracks that don't have to be seats. So we started putting in weapons racks, and avionics racks, and other things, because we had a nice, solid interface to be able to tie things into the aircraft structure. As well as, you know, how do I bring new computing capabilities to the aircraft if I do need to add a processor? And sometimes you do, especially for survivability equipment, where you've got very high-performance processing that you can't really bring into the server farm. What space do I have in terms of card space, or rack space, or shelf space to be able to add those capabilities, and put them in a place where it's useful and connectable? But, what's our goal as a platform, or as an airframer, right? Our goal is to be as useful as possible to as many situations as possible, and evolvable as possible. That's how you sell more airplanes. So, right, if we do a good job, then everybody finds a different way to make use of that aircraft, or that platform, right? And everybody's happy, it's win-win, right? We made a great product, and everybody gets great use out of it. But that requires that flexibility, and the flexibility has to include the physical modularity on how you bring those capabilities. Next slide, please. And then, systems, right? So, I can bring a thing onto the aircraft, but as, in a modern digital world, most of the things you bring to the aircraft are smart. The bombs are smart, the missiles are smart, the radios are smart, the people are smart, they want to know things, they want to get it from the airplane. So, those things tend to require power, some of them require cooling, and almost all of them require data of some sort. So if I've got the cabin of the aircraft, and you may see it, right, in a well-designed aircraft, here's the utility interface panel. It's got power, it's got data, it's got all the things, it's got comm, right? All the things that you might want to plug into as you bring those other capabilities to the aircraft. Then one of the other things, and you can see it on the slide, aux fuel. If you don't design for auxiliary fuel, and the modularity and flexibility that you can get for adding fuel tanks in the cabin, or on a hardpoint, or somewhere else, don't be surprised if it's really hard and expensive to do after the fact. So again, how do I create, how do I create access to the aircraft fundamental systems that allows other people in the future to bring, you know, new capabilities and new ideas to the platform? Next slide, please. So, what are, so really, in that design process, and Matt asked the question, right? What do we think about when we design for modularity? You know, which reference architecture, right? Is it the Army's, you know, EAF with face and host? Is it the Air Force, OMS? Is it, right? Name your standard, and the cartoon is real. There is always somebody trying to create the new standard to rule them all, and they try, but there's no such thing as one. For everybody who was part of the Army discussion this morning, MBSC and Cameo came up a lot. And as we talk about SysML and model-based systems engineering, it's really important, in my opinion, really important, to think about what are you trying to get from it? Am I trying to capture requirements and trace them? Am I trying to capture interfaces? Am I trying to capture all of the architectures all in one place, so that I can use them for system safety analysis? Am I trying to actually do system performance, right? Electrical load and other things, by capturing all that information? And I say that because it's really easy to create self-licking ice cream cones if you're not careful, and you can put in millions of dollars' worth of effort into MBSC, and then find yourself not making any use of it. So, before even installing Cameo on your first computer, think about what you're trying to achieve, and then work backwards into how much model-based systems engineering do you need to accomplish that? How digital, right? So, their fly-by-wire is great, and I'm a huge fly-by-wire fan, but not every application requires fly-by-wire. Not every application requires digital vehicle management. Sometimes, simpler is better, and it goes back to what are you trying to accomplish, and how is your design going to enable that? But, that being said, as we talk about modern, large, complicated platforms, chances are you want them to be very digital in order to take advantage of the things that you bring to a large, powerful platform, like we're talking about here. And then, lastly, you know, it's easy for me to say, everybody should have tie-down rings, and hardpoints, and hook connections, and all the stuff, but every time you do that, you add a pound here, and you add a pound there, and you add a pound over there. And on a vertical lift aircraft, weight begets weight. You know, we said sometimes, you know, add a pound somewhere, and you've probably added two more pounds everywhere else, right? Take a pound away, and you've probably taken two pounds away everywhere else. So, choose wisely as you think about how much you're investing in physical modularity, and make sure that it buys its way onto the aircraft. But, it always buys its way onto the aircraft at some level, the only question is how much. But, yeah, everything's got to be cost-benefit risk, but we take that very seriously as we talk about clean-sheet aircraft, and there's always that axis of tension of how much, because it's easy to say, I want to do less and make it lighter and cheaper, and then it's also easy to say, but I want it to do more, right? And there's always that fight, and hopefully in the end, you find, you know, the truth lies somewhere in between.
Excellent. Thanks, Lee. All right, last up, we have from GE, we have Mike Sousa. Mike is the Turboshaft Engine Business Development Manager for GE. He is currently the responsible BD person for T901. He's been with GE for 40 years, and has been in engineering, marketing, and project management during that time. Wish a lot of our BD guys also had the bearings. He's worked for both military and commercial programs. Mike, over to you.
Modularity that is built into a turboshaft engine, and we have always looked at modularity as something that enables maintenance in the field. It was part of our strategy when we developed the T700 CT7 family of engines, to have a modular design, because it would make maintenance of the engine much easier. And each one of those modules that's shown there, the accessory module, the coal section module, which includes the compressor, as well as the A and B sumps, the hot section module, and the power turbine, can all be removed in the field. They basically are line-replaceable units, and the benefit of that for our customers, whether it's military customers or it's commercial customers, is that you don't have to send engines back to a depot for repairs. You can replace any one of those modules in the field, you don't have to go back to a test stand after you do that, and that allows the maintainer, the flexibility, or the user, the flexibility as to how to maintain those engines in the field. If you are flying a commercial version of this engine, you can literally, what you will probably do is end up wearing out the hot section before you end up wearing out the parts of the engine hub. But, the ability to replace that hot section without returning it to the depot is a huge competitive advantage, and literally, you can fly the helicopter one day, and in the shadow of the aircraft, you can replace the hot section and be ready to fly the next day, and not have to go back to the depot, which generates a whole bunch of cost savings. And that was a real big driver as to how we did that. There are certainly design decisions that have to be made to be able to do that. You could get a little bit more performance out of it if you put the turbine, didn't cannoli with the turbine, but then you'd be exposing the sumps of the engine. And one of the things about turbo machinery that spins at 45,000 RPM, it doesn't like to get dirt in bearings, because that kind of ruins everybody's day. So keeping those sumps self-contained, you pay a little bit of a performance penalty, but you make it up in lifecycle cost in a big way. That's part of our strategy, that is the way we've designed these engines for a long time. There are other line-replaceable units on the engine, you know, the accessory module is covered with line-replaceable units. Those are things that typically, General Electric is not the best at designing those things. We're pretty good at turbo machinery and stuff like that, but when it comes to making valves or coolers, we're not the best at that kind of stuff. So we do use those parts as source-controlled items, where if somebody wants to make that, we specify how that part has to be work, it can be replaced with that same unit, or it can be replaced by another qualified source control unit. So if you wanted to make a valve for the engine, we define that spec, and then multiple people can make it, and it is not something that we have to do all of those pieces off. So again, that gives you flexibility in how you maintain it, and how we source those pieces. And then if we go to the next slide, there are a whole bunch of things that we have to talk about. I mean, the technical data, right? So, we as General Electric are an 80% commercial company, 20% military. We spend a ton of money on technology that is predominantly commercial, and then we leverage those commercial investments in order to be able to make the best military products that we can. And, we really aren't in a position where we want to give away all of those commercially developed technologies, because somebody wants to maintain the engine. But we have an obligation to make sure that the customers can maintain the engines the way they want to do it. That doesn't mean they need to have all of the tech data that is developed in terms of putting that engine together, but the ability to repair those parts, the ability to replay, to keep those things flying, is absolutely critical, and making sure that we're giving them the data that's required to support those things, to repair the things that it economically makes sense for them to repair, is part of what we're focused on. And again, there are things, like if it's those line-replaceable units, we don't own the technology for those. So if you want to have a second source, or you need a second source, we're not going to go and give piece-part drawings for a valve to the rights to that, to the government, we don't even have those rights. And we could ask them for it, but unless the maintainer wants to be making their own valves, which is really hard for us to justify, then it doesn't make sense to do that. And so making sure that we're giving the customer, and each customer is different, the right technical data package, so that they can maintain the way they want to do that, and not creating too big of a burden in terms of what kind of technologies they have to pay for in order to be able to maintain those things in the field, is kind of critical. And so we struggle when people ask for, we want the whole data package. It's like, what does that mean? And again, that doesn't mean that you need to know how to run our CFD codes to redesign our turbo machinery in order to maintain that in the field. We also, the T700 CT7 family started out with a military application, and then we had commercial applications. And there were commercial applications that drove new requirements that we went and commercially funded. And when we developed those commercial components, sometimes they were just all-in-one module of the engine, we could then go back to the military customer and say, here is a commercially developed module that will improve your time on wing, you can get more power out of it, do you want to just update your engine with that module for those military applications? And allowing that modular change to get more performance, and as well as lifecycle costs, was a real advantage to the military customer. We would love to standardize the engine as its own module, so that it can go into a boatload of different helicopters. of different helicopters. And we do use these engines on a whole wide range of different applications, from turboprops to commercial helicopters to military helicopters. But there are times when we just can't make everybody do things the way we want. I don't know why everybody doesn't accept that you should just design the aircraft around the engine. Some people don't want to do that, but if they could, that would be simpler. And so we try to accommodate in the design of, of the engine, different ways you can mount the engine in the aircraft. Because every aircraft manufacturer wants to mount it a slightly different way. And so making sure that we have one configuration that can be incorporated into different aircraft without making substantial changes to the engine is kind of our strategy as to how to treat the entire engine as a module for those different applications. Well, it's kind of the little spiel I had, so.
Very good. Thanks to the panel, to the room, we're going to do a few Q and As. So I'll start with some softball questions, and then you can start thinking about the questions that you might have. And so maybe as I see people moving towards the mic after the first couple of questions, I'll pause and, and take questions from the audience. But the first question to the group, I'd like for you to kind of answer this. You know, you as individuals, you personally, which of the following aspects of MOSA have you found to be the hardest to implement and why? So if we think about it from a perspective of making modularity decisions, those openness aspects, the technical side, the business side, or just the communication and collaboration of all of it? Which are the, have you seen be the hardest aspects of MOSA?
I would salt, I'll kick it off. I'd say the business case. To be honest, the technical side, you know, I think we're getting better at that, you know, but especially when you're with a, a large customer and large installed base of aircraft. It's one of those like economic problems, and going to the business case analogy is whenever you have an issue that has a concentrated cost but distributed benefit, it becomes a hard sell. If you have a, a bunch of users, and each one may have a small benefit of the MOSA that they, they see, whether it's the supply chain commonality, whether it's a training piece, whether it's the maintenance, obsolescence avoidance per an operator might have five aircraft, how much is that worth to them for the investment? And internally, how much is it worth to any given product line to incorporate that, especially if it's working backward on legacy aircraft? So, you know, the, it's either an investment in NRE for a very long-term payout, or it's finding a single customer to bear the initial investment, and then how do you backflow that in an economically rational way so that they don't think you're, you know, if it's customer-funded development, do they want you using that to benefit other customers? And there's provisions about that. So incorporating a way that you can roll out this capability, whether it's on a physical sense or in the more digital aspects of MOSA, trying to figure out a way to make that make sense across the organization. I think it's improving over time as, as the benefits become more clear to everybody. But the first time through is always a challenge, and, you know, it's always getting the initial infrastructure build on, I think can be challenging, at least I've seen that a couple of places.
Anybody else from the panel?
So I'll go back to the, the which standard. You know, as, as you think about, you know, on the FARA program, we talked about, you know, capability to bring in some previous Army investments and leverage that onto the aircraft. One of those was 60 Victor. Well, 60 Victor was integrated, right, starting around, what, 2015? With a previous version of FACE from where we were in 2019, 2020. So in order to make that work, we would theoretically have to create a legacy enclave of 60 Victor things that we didn't really care about or want, but it was more of a political statement that we could. And then wrap those in a modern FACE standard and have the rest of the system function around it. And that's still, in theory, a born digital system, much less any of the other legacy components that we wanted to bring to the aircraft. So, yeah, which, which standard and standards that evolve are difficult. So, yeah, that's hard. I'll throw one more out there, and this is kind of looking downstream at our supplier base. As we talk about virtualizing boxes, if I'm a company that makes a box that does a thing, I've got hardware and I've got software, and then I've got interface on how do you take advantage of my hardware and software? Well, if I take the hardware away from that company and virtualize that capability into a central processor, now the business case of I no longer sell X number of boxes, right, to the military or to a commercial operator to be able to make money off that hardware-per-unit chipset cost, now I've got to figure out how to monetize software in a way that I can support my business and, and business lifecycle of, you know, support and upgrades, et cetera. And, and I would say that, you know, every program struggles with how to incentivize, monetize, and support, you know, software-centric applications. You know, you see it with Microsoft. They hate selling CDs now. They want to sell you a subscription because that's how, right, you were able to monetize it. And I think you see the same thing on our software-defined aircraft.
Yeah, I certainly see that aspect, especially, well, both points, but the latter one, especially from a standpoint of you have a current industrial base, and then once you start changing your approach, you have to realize that you're probably going to shift that industrial base somewhat. So people who were doing X are no longer going to do X. Somebody else is going to do that aspect of it. And so, you know, from a real strategy perspective, I think that's why it's important. We think about those problems ahead of time, make sure that, yes, it's okay to disrupt the industrial base, but make sure there still is one with your new approach, right? Other thoughts or comments from?
From the engine standpoint, I think the open systems part of our design would be a struggle. I mean, if somebody came to us and said, we just designed a new HP turbine for your engine, and we're going to just stick it in there. And we, we would be like, you know, that would be a really challenging thing to do and to pull off safely.
Good luck.
Yeah, and well, you know, believe me, we don't want our nameplate on the side of it after somebody else puts a new piece of turbo machinery in the center of that engine. So we're modular, but how open each one of those modules really would be, would be scary.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%. And quite frankly, that's one of the reasons why I invited Mike to be on this panel is because I used to personally use engines as one of the most prime examples for tailoring MOSA. Because I kept getting a lot of people saying, well, if I don't have GPR, then I'm not MOSA. If I don't have a whole bunch of standards for absolutely everything, then I'm not MOSA. And I was like, you know, engines are achieving the objectives, affordability, speed to field, all those sorts of things, because they tailored their MOSA for the program. They said, what, how much transparency do I need relative to openness for an engine? And for that product line, as the government, because I worked those programs, like, we didn't necessarily need new vendors for every piece-part. We just wanted those abilities to do things like you talked about of like, hey, I'd like the ability to do some of the depot repair myself so that I can surge when I need the capability. So I don't need to have white box transparency on everything on the aircraft, right? Other thoughts?
Hey, Matt, I'll pile into that one. Flight control systems are similar, right? You don't necessarily want a second and third-party source pieces of the flight control system versus the basic platform, because we would, we would take our name off the nameplate as well. There are certain things that just don't lend themselves to lifecycle evolution the same way that most of the mission systems and other applications we were talking about.
Yep. Yeah, things like man tail rotor blades, too. You know, you try to second-source stuff like that, and, you know, even if you had the full design package, the intricacies of meeting all the aircraft requirements include things like vibes and, and stability and, and aerodynamic lift is, it becomes a very challenging problem.
Yeah, I think the data rights IP, I think it's one of those instances where, despite on the defense market especially, it's, it's been a pendulum shift back and forth. And I think there was a time where the government realized that they'd been getting the short end from industry for possibly decades, and then decided that we would try and correct all of it at once and demand everything or nothing. And it's like, okay, so again, the question is, open for what? To what end? Is it, are you trying to have an organic capability because of a statutory requirement? Is it to do depot-level maintenance? Is it to enable the operator? Is it to write your own code? Which, what's your end state? Because if you want, you know, full access across the board, then that's, that's obstructing both of us from achieving our objectives on this case.
Great. All right, next question is, you know, each of your companies that you work for, you both, you all certainly have competitors. Some may even be on the stage. But when you think about those modularity decisions, how similar do you think those competitors are relative to those same sorts of modularity decisions? And like, if they're different, why do you think they're different?
I can start us off here, and it, it'll be very top, top-level, and just, a lot of it is, and some of my intuition to, to this particular point, when we look at, you know, what Archer's bringing to the table relative to our, to our, our competitors. But to me, I, I think it'll depend greatly on how horizontally or vertically you're integrated right now, and where you'd be able to maybe take advantage of that or not take advantage of that. The various people, various companies in, in our market, there is various degrees of, you know, how much is being in-house and how much is being outsourced? And there's various strategies of, of what to do and, and why to do it, especially as you're chasing this FAA cert. So I think it, it, how much is inside and how much is outside of, of your, of your product?
Yep. That's a good point. One of the first companies I saw relative to the domain that you're in, I was pretty surprised to see how much they were doing in-house, especially relative to kind of the motor and up sort of thing. And they're like, yeah, it's all about weight. If I buy this part from a company, well, I'm probably going to take off a few parts, and I might have to add some other stuff, and I'm, I'm still like throwing meat weight. But if I build the whole thing with like a very specific design in there, then I could cut several pounds out.
It's amazing how, those are almost obvious things to keep in-house for, for the most part. A lot of it is discriminating technologies as well, but there's a surprising number of things that, you know, maybe there's enough commercial off the shelf and maturity on things that you should maybe not vertically do that, right?
Yep. Others?
For, for us on the engine side, every engine competitor claims to have a modular design. But what that modular design means to one company versus another is not always exactly the same. And it's hard in advertising mode. It's hard in a, you know, a top-level summary of things where everybody claims to be modular to get to the next level, to explain what the true differences are for those things. So it's, it's always a challenge to make sure people understand what that really means and understand, and that they fully appreciate what the differences are.
It seems like a lot of you kind of touched on this, that you all have so many different customers, and you're trying to meet all their demands, that that could very quickly drive you to make different kinds of modularity decisions based off of who the biggest customer is, or, hey, I've heard that several times from now, I'm going to invest, and I'm going to make that. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things we've never made, a modularity decision is on like our inlet particle separator on our small turboshaft engines, because our biggest customer wants the inlet particles separated there because they fly in crappy conditions. And a true commercial application doesn't fly in anywhere near as nasty an environment as the military does, and they would like that to just come off. So if we could make that as a module that was just removed for those commercial applications, that would be a really nice thing for the commercial applications, but it would also drive additional cost versus having that commonality. Cost and weight would be big drivers if we tried to do that just for the commercial market.
Yeah, but if there's a big enough market, you would do it.
If there's a big enough market, we would certainly do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something we deal with. That's, you know, for example, the biggest customer for H145 or UH72 is the US Army. So you have a concentrated interest in certain configurations that are common to, to military requirements, but it is not as big as the aggregate of many, many distributed customers out there. And so again, and also, you know, building a, you know, satisfying all those in a way that can also be manufactured reliably and in a rational fashion, that can be, the engineering is done in one place, and it has to be able to be built equally as well in Germany as it does in Mississippi. All those adds sort of, I'd say, one, one source, a strength of, of being able to standardize and achieve those high levels of commonality, but the same level. It can be an issue with agility of being able to, okay, if we do need to move out on any requirement, then how do we integrate that in a way that all these places are able to, to deal with the, you know, design implementation of each, of each potential requirement or product change?
That's good. Maybe to further that question, if we all kind of generally agree that a lot of these modularity decisions are driven by either internal business practices or by like customer demands, which of the kind of MOSA objectives do you think are the most important, or do you hear the most often? Let's just say it's like affordability, it's speed to field, it's reduce supply chain risk, easier insertion of technology, those sorts of objectives?
I think the end objective from the military perspective is evolvability, right? So I want to be able to evolve ahead of the threats rather than lagging behind them in the world's dangerous place that changes quickly. Now, what that turns into is if I'm good at evolving the systems on the aircraft, means I'm probably doing it cheaper, because I'm doing it faster, and it's probably easier, right? And all those things kind of snowball, but it's the same result of how quickly, easily, and cheaply can I get a new capability onto the aircraft, whether it be a software drop or putting in a new sensor or adding another COM capability?
Yeah, to pile on that, too, in my prior life, obsolescence drains what would, or rather be spent on developing new technology on your IRAD. And you're sitting there in these IRAD meetings, and everyone's got their handout, and, you know, oh, we got to put X million dollars to this particular obsolescence system, and like, really? Just to get the same capability? And that's taken, boy, oof, if there is a way to, to not have to spend a lot of money for stuff that's not moving the needle, right?
Yep. Okay, I want to take a pause and allow for questions. I've got some more questions, but love to have some audience questions.
Hey, thanks. By the way, a really great presentation. Totally agree with everything you guys are saying about modularity, especially what you said, Matt, at the beginning with regard to the who and the driver's sport. It's going to be different. I'm also really very much in agreement with the history aspect of it. I put that in the category of smart product line planning, business decisions, stakeholder drivers, mandatory piece-parts reuse across the field, supply chains where you got multiple suppliers. These are all part of those modularity decisions, and they're good, and they're done the way you need to. But what I'm struggling with is understanding the, I don't know if you're calling it, an equality with, with MOSA, because I didn't hear any of you guys talk about one thing that was a struggle for me. So if you don't know, I was 31 years at Boeing, and I was their chief architect for all vertical lift programs for a while. And there was one question that I really had trouble with, with my bosses back then, and didn't hear you address it yet. And it went like this, basically. Hey, Tom, we, we just put this sensor on the Apache, and now I got to put the same one on the V22. They're both Boeing products. We, we built the avionics for both of those aircraft. Why do I have to charge the Navy the same price for the same piece of equipment on an aircraft that both of them are ours? What, what did we do wrong? What are you doing wrong as the chief architect where we're stuck in this situation? And I struggled with that problem for a while. Actually, two or three bosses of mine asked me the same question. But by the time I got to the second and the third, I had the correct answer, and it was a problem they couldn't solve. And the reason why is because all those programs had a different receiving architecture to plug into. So every, every time, the same exact part was used on two different Boeing products, the price was pretty much the same because it was total reintegration, even with the same part number, even with the same reuse, even with the same GFE, contract after contract. So in my mind, over time, that led to the difference between modularity and MOSA, in my mind, is, does there exist a common constraining architecture at the enterprise level that all the programs need to plug into? Now, at that time, these are legacy architectures. They could not be the same. One delivered a bunch of stuff to one architecture for the Army for Apache, another one delivered a different architecture to the Navy on the V22. There is no way Boeing was in a position to force one program to accept the architecture of another. So if you could, whoever wants to, do you have the context of a common receiving architecture that you, as an enterprise organization, try to enforce on your subordinate programs to gain what, to me, makes MOSA different from modularity as opposed to being the same thing? Sorry for the involved question, but I think I needed the background for it. But, so, that's the question.
Great question.
I'll lead off. So, so back to my, I'd say, single main point was which architecture, right? Which, which reference architecture do you go with? So I will say that within the Army ecosystem, that a lot of effort has gone into the enterprise architecture framework and the future vertical lift architecture framework, and it's a lot of acronyms. But the, if you are consistent and willing to stick with it, right, there is a blueprint to move ahead, at least within Army programs, on a single architecture and a single set of data models and a single set of interface requirements. But as soon as I flip over to an airports program... to an airports program, I have an air force government, government reference architecture that is slightly different. Um, and right now we're discussing similar architectures with the Navy. Um, I sat through an industry day recently on the Navy looking for the, the future of Seahawk, and they produced a briefing from a Navy perspective that looks like almost exactly what Matt would have put up on the board five years ago, working at PEO Aviation. Um, you can tell it's the same intent, it's the same strategic construct, but I guarantee it'll be at least 5% different. And as soon as it's 5% different, then our ability to copy paste largely falls apart. So, you know, I would say that we are trying to, we're trying to advertise the value of consistency to say, you can take advantage of the dump truck full of money they spent over there and I don't have to do it again, but only if you're happy with exactly what they did. And I, I'm not convinced anybody's going to be exactly happy.
I'll make just a couple of quick comments. One is, um, I largely agree, obviously because we, we started the enterprise architecture framework stuff. But, um, the one caution I have relative to that area, especially because I'm out of the government now and I can say this, is that the government is, is too apt to go and say, okay, I'm going to have that one architecture that there will rule them all. And I think that is tremendously unwise, um, especially because of the amount of innovation that you'll end up stifling because everybody's trying to force feed into something very particular. I think it is wise for things that don't tend to have a lot of innovation to them that are like, especially like, like civil applications, things that like you're doing for aerospace entry and it like, I'm not concerned by that. So just, yes, everybody should use this type of an FMS. Everybody should use this for, you know, general navigation sorts of things. Everybody should have at it, define that stuff super well and set it for the entire enterprise, not only army enterprise, but air force and others as well. Um, but just got to be cautious of those areas where you're wanting to innovate. You have to make it easy to get on board. The other thing is like, if you look at the air force, I, I really think the world's going to look very different in the next five years because they're putting a lot of effort towards this architecture stuff. Um, and they're doing it different than PEO Aviation did it in the sense that they have several reference architectures for what I'd say are almost like domains. Like this is a domain-based architecture for sensors. This is a domain-based architecture for EW sorts of systems. They're not diving in deep on the individual things. Um, so I think we're going to start to see some of those lines because like the Navy, they love all those architectures and they're going to get on board with. The army has still not quite looked at those yet, and I think they need. Um, if you looked at like just autonomy, there's a big infatuation with autonomy right now. Air Force and Navy are very, very tightly coupled on autonomy. Army's kind of doing their own thing. And so why not, to your point, say, hey, we could literally do the trifecta here and have it across the three surfaces to say, if you're doing autonomy, here's your big bubble. Go operate within autonomy GRA, right? So I think there's opportunity. I think we need to keep pushing though. Other thoughts?
So I think you guys are kind of talking around one of the issues that I, I know I've struggled with this guy, talking many, many years about, you know, our system architecture and, you know, what the design philosophy is. And I think I'm not hearing the words that, that I had hoped to hear, which is granularity. You know, how do you, once you set a granularity in the architecture and then every piece of that, every grain in that granularity has to interface with something else. You know, I, I'd really like to see, I, I, I take to heart the 5% delta. You know, as soon as you're 5% off, you're, you're basically starting from scratch on, on a lot of, a lot of stuff. And I, my, I'm interested in your opinion because I have my opinions on the reality of, of, of Mosa and, and whose ox are you going to gore when you want your modular system to come in and take over for someone else's modular system? And whether the system architecture and granularity, uh, was established by some third person who really didn't understand system architecture. This is a philosophical question that I think that we as the industry have struggled with since the day, the earliest days pre-Mosa of how can we cut down on, on, on various aspects of aircraft cost. But I'm interested in panel's thoughts on the philosophical approach of granularity and, and system interface.
Great, great question. I have a lot of thoughts on this. About that, others start.
Um, I'll pile under Matt's previous statement. I think the air force is putting a lot of effort into creating that granularity and being directive. Here's what we want and here's what we want it to look like. Now, the air force has reached out to industry for help in developing that granularity, but their, their intent is to be extremely directive at extreme detail. I think on the army side, there's a more latitude in the enterprise framework, um, which creates more opportunity for differences in, in, you know, parallel evolution that doesn't look the same. Um, you know, we're all, right, within FBL toddlers when it comes to, you know, the full extent of the integrated modular avionics and where we're going to end up with, uh, on the digital backbone and with the data modeling. Um, and the question before, right? How would you judge your competitors? I would say because we're all toddlers, it's hard to say who's going to grow up to be a useful adult. But I do appreciate, um, the value of what the army pushed for on the FARA program, um, in terms of the open system verification demos, right? Troops in the pudding. I'm going to come to your house with nothing but the, the operator's manual and I'm going to kick you out of the room and I'm going to change, I'm going to add something, delete something and change something and prove that you've provided enough of an operator's manual and followed enough of my standards that that works. And you know, without that as a forcing function, I'm not convinced that, you know, it's really ever going to get there with any sort of useful detail.
I think one of the comments I would have relative to the question is, especially on the government side, it's very difficult to almost establish a set of expectations relative to granularity, because essentially what ends up happening behind the scenes is as soon as you define one thing to this level of granularity, that might be the perfect level of granularity. It's exactly what I want. Suddenly everybody else thinks that for every other thing, you have to establish the exact same level of granularity, which I think couldn't be more wrong. In fact, they used to have a chart that I would go try to brief people with and I'd say, hey, look, if you look across like an aircraft and you have like kind of a degree of granularity, it should be like all over the map relative to the level of granularity. A lot of that has to do with how much do I care about what's going on inside of that thing? How much does it change? Like flight controls was like a good example. Like quite frankly, we should have very little granularity inside of flight controls because it's a fairly large bubble and I shouldn't care about what's inside because I'm never going to do anything with that data, right? Other than go qualify a system. I'm not going to dig in. I'm not going to change algorithms, not going to do all those things. So I should not get into, I expect algorithm to break up into these kinds of gains and these kinds of, should not do that. And other systems where that is where we're changing things a lot or that we've had a lot of historical problems and I probably actually have expertise within the government, then I'm probably going to go to a different level of granularity. So like engines is a really great example of this. The army actually has like a ton of expertise relative to engines because they've worked with so many engine companies at such great detail that they will go to a lower level of granularity because they've seen these problems across multiple sets of engines so they can kind of bring best of breed into an individual program. Um, so it really goes, you know, across the map relative to how granular should you be. Um, but I, I think if we started with that as a start point and just understood you have to have the same level of granularity, we, we'd actually make some progress. Not even go to like some of the component spec models that the army's doing right now. Some of those need to be very granular. Others, they need to stay top level, draw a large boundary and just move on. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I think to some extent, especially in developmental programs, you had to have been sort of a, you know, an OODA loop or a DO loop of, you know, you want a standard, but at the same point you don't want to be dictated to. And you end up in this sort of thing of, well, what do you have? Well, what do you want between you and the government while organizing this thing? So establishing that level of granularity, some of this stuff on the, on the Mosa side and on some of the autonomy, it is still at that point where you're, everyone's at the toddler phase. And just like toddlers, they want guidance, but they don't want it at the same time. Um, and trying to find that, that medium where you're allowing the innovation, um, and allowing, you know, difference, uh, different configurations while still minimizing the risk and those things that are knowns is kind of where the, you know, a good PM really makes some money on the government side.
So I probably did a terrible job of actually introducing myself. I actually now work for a small business out in the industry called Perry Labs. And like, one of the things we struggle with as a small business is like, we're willing to go and invest into developing modules ourselves. However, getting the government or a set of customers to just draw that first boundary and say, these are the kinds of things I'm looking for so that I can go ahead and lean forward and invest in those if I have multiple customers all wanting about the same thing. Um, largely we, we don't see that kind of information flowing out so we can invest ahead of time. So then you can like turnkey buy COTS solutions and just say, hey, module defined, I can buy that thing tomorrow. It's no risk because already built and have no development costs. I just need to integrate onto the platform and move forward at a, at a greater speed.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good example. Maybe even the army transformation is looking at, right? Uh, being a product, made pairs of product company as opposed to a DOD executing company. And I think that's going to start gaining, you know, traction. So.
Right. I mean, that's a great point. Like army tick two stuff is, is going to change behaviors inside of how the army procures stuff. And they're going to continue to want to go faster and faster. And I think from an architecture standpoint, you know, people are going to have to be prepared to say, yes, maybe I wanted this great level of granularity, but hey, if I bubble that granularity up just like one or two levels, suddenly I can have seven different COTS providers and I can execute tomorrow versus spending the next seven years developing that thing. Hey, maybe worth considering.
Although those seven different providers will have to have enough definition that they all work, right? If you take it up a level and you plug it and it doesn't work, then it's not helpful. I was going to say the, the, I mean, good example of not everything needs to be well-defined because it's not useful, right? It would make me giggle, but it, it doesn't matter if you were to specify that rotors have to turn the right way. Um, right? Just some things about the aircraft don't need to be defined because they are, don't affect, you know, critical mission capability.
Right. I endorse that.
Well, we have a plan that they turn both ways. So, you know.
Andrew Hickson here with TT Tech. Just a question on how you think the path to more optionally piloted unmanned and even then attributable systems, uh, are going to affect, um, the Mosa kind of adoption and maybe some of the solutions coming in from the lower cost attributable side, you know, how that might, you know, drive costs down in certain modules or, you know, sensor packages, whatever, that might end up affecting kind of Mosa objectives or requirements?
Um, I, I think that's, you know, that's going to be big to, to roll in more capabilities and especially on the uncrewed side. And as you, as you brought up, uh, behaviors are going to be big and, and having a framework, uh, that's based in some type of, of modular open system approach that allows incorporation of advanced behaviors to maybe do a Diller mission, do, do an ISR mission, do electronic attack mission, um, or do a, a, a route planning, um, in route rerouting and stuff like that too. But having the framework that is at a, at a significantly less flight critical level that can be layered on and, and then other people who have that capability, other companies and other technologies, that's growing so, so fast, right? And to layer that in and, and go is, is going to be very, very important. And, and I think a lot of companies are looking at, at taking advantage of that.
I think there's, there's two sides to that question. One, you know, that the autonomy piece for either greater autonomy in manned flights or version optionally manned or a, a fully unmanned aircraft, all have different considerations as far as design assurance, as far as reliability. Um, and they may not be compatible. And again, it goes back to the Mosa for what end? Is it to enable that, um, the dissimilar DOW systems to be integrated for the OPV? Is it to, uh, allow this mission expansion and obsolescence avoidance on the manned vehicle? Or is it to get it as cheap as possible on the fully unmanned vehicle? Um, all those things are, you know, can be at odds without a properly structured, you know, requirements from the beginning. And, you know, again, an experience level from people at, for example, NAVIR may be very well acquainted with it. Um, but when you work your way up to people who, you know, at say a requirements level, you know, to layman, the idea of the difference between a remotely unpiloted vehicle and a OPV may seem somewhat trivial, but it's huge, right? Or, or either going down the other way in the scale. The consideration has changed greatly, even though, well, just like changing the rotor direction does not seem that hard, it is. Um, so all considerations when you come out, when your initial requirements develop them with the, informed by that knowledge, uh, again, without being too constrictive, but with the acknowledgement that, okay, you ask for too much, you're going to get, you know, buy some cost, risk, time, et cetera. Um, and on the attributable piece, you know, I think that's huge. I'll just say that, you know, just like vehicles are more software defined, aircraft are going to be. I mean, for helicopters, unless you go into tilt rotor and high-speed VTOL, they all pretty much fly the same speed, the same distances, the same altitude. So they're defined by what you put on. So how do you make that commoditized? I would say if we're doing, you know, aerial justice connector, which is unmanned Lakota, it's, it's 4,000 pounds of payload for whatever you want to bring with the party. And whether that's, uh, you know, effectors that go boom at the end, whether it's ones that are, you know, going out and looking for stuff, whether it's, you know, whatever sensor it is, whatever it, you know, other, uh, you know, comm relay package, network, mesh network, whatever you want to put in there with that pound, this is what enables that capability. And if you don't describe your requirements again from the beginning, you may either, you know, one, you could excess cost, but at the same time you may limit the growth path for that vehicle. So all those things you got to sort of keep in mind, all the way from, you know, Joe Pilate goes to the Pentagon for a three-year tour, has to be at least familiar with these concepts. And when he, you know, throws the requirements down the street to the acquisition authority, that that's, uh, that's kept in mind as we, you know, get more and more granular on the requirements.
It sounds very much like where we were at with DVE like 10 years ago, the great visual environment stuff where it's like, yeah, I think I might want to do pilotage, all that DOWA stuff at some point. But right now I just want to do like, you know, DOWC level sorts of things. So you go to start developing and making decisions. And then low behold, hey, you know, I think I want to use that for pilotage and you're not positioned. You have an architect to enable that to occur. And so I think the same thing is in some areas is happening with autonomy where, and a lot of it's customer driven, right? The customer is saying, I don't think I, you know, it's going to be optionally manned. It's going to be, you know, something not, not fully autonomous. And that makes you make decisions that aren't necessarily the best decisions for the long term, which they're going to end up wanting to be completely hands-off.
I'll add, add one more. So question, right? Mosa and autonomy. I think it is the exact same discussion we've been having. If, if you don't impose a reference architecture, if you don't impose a requirement for data abstraction, you'll never get the ability to bring those modules, right? Sense or observe orient decide act, right? The different elements won't be as interchangeable as you want them to be. Um, autonomy, I think, is a great example of a forcing function for why you want to impose the reference architecture and impose data abstraction. Because, because we're at such a developmental stage, if you're not able to quickly and cheaply evolve, then it's going to fall apart and become un-executable, unaffordable. So it's, um, the same problem, just kind of with the volume turned up a little bit.
All right. Well, I think we are right on time. So I'll give you back one minute and we're just applause for the group.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for our panelists.